Okay, good, thank you. Welcome everyone to the October 20th workshop and city council meeting. So the workshop this evening. Hold on one second. Alright, so the workshop this evening is in reference to the lead paint program update and we expect that to be about forty five minutes. And I think we'll go right to that and bring the folks in.
People are still coming in to the attendees, so it may just be a second or two. Everyone should be on their way.
So I'm losing sight of some. Alright, so we have quite a guest list to the workshops. I'm just gonna make a general welcome to all of you and thank you so much for taking time out of your day to take part in this workshop. Lincoln, is he also being invited in?
He should be coming in.
Okay, Dennis, were you thinking we'd start with Lincoln and then turn it over to Aaron?
Yes, I'll actually open it up just quickly if you want mayor and do that. So we will have a very brief opening from Link Jeffers, an overview of our lead program, our current programs and current grants that we've been operating under and then we'll transition over to Erin and her team here from Healthy Andrews Goggan to complete the presentation. So I believe Link's in now, so we could, we can go ahead and get started if you like.
Okay, I think so first, why don't we do some quick introductions? And then we'll turn it over to Link. So Erin, if you could start and then we'll switch over to Katie. And then Amanda and Dr. Smith and Pamela, if you could just introduce yourself and let us know what organization you might be from, Erin.
Hi, I'm Erin Gay. I'm the executive director of Healthy Andrews Goggan.
Good.
Hi, everyone. I'm Katie Box. I manage our physical activity nutrition and lead poisoning prevention activities at Healthy Andrews Goggan.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda Ready and I'm the executive director of the National Center for Healthy Housing.
I think that means I'm next. I'm Dr. Andy Smith. I'm the state toxicologist and manager of the Environmental and Occupational Health Program at the Maine CDC within the Department of Health and Human Services.
I'm Pamela Bushi. I'm the director of special ed for Lewiston schools.
Thank you. And Pamela got invited kind of at the last minute by me, so we really appreciate it for taking time to take part in this workshop. And Link, introduce yourself and take it away.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Lincoln Jeffers. I'm the Economic and Community Development Director for the city. Erin, appreciate your bringing such a such a broad spectrum of heavy hitters in this industry. Lewiston has really been combating lead as long as I've been with the city, which really started back in 2000, back in 2009 or so, we had the unfortunate I, we were known as having three times the rate of childhood lead poisoning at any other place in the state. So it has absolutely been an issue here for a long time. We've got about 5,000 units downtown for apartments and about sixty nine percent of those have been built before nineteen forty, eighty six percent of them were built before nineteen seventy eight. And those are the units that lead is so prevalent in. A lot of these properties have not been well, been well maintained over the years. And so we've been fortunate to be getting federal grants. We've gotten since 2009, a total of excuse me, since twenty fourteen, we've gotten about twelve million dollars. We've had Senator Collins in town. We've had Commissioner Ben Carson here from HUD really looking at the issue and seeing how we've been addressing it. Travis Mills is the, our manager of the twenty seven lead grant. He's done a great job with it. That was a three point four million dollar grant. We're starting to wrap it up. At this point, we've got, there were two hundred and twenty units. So we were looking to make lead safe. At this point, we've had two hundred and thirty seven enrolled. There's two hundred and twenty nine contracts already awarded for, for doing lead safe mitigation in those units and two hundred and two have already been cleared. That one's going to be wrapping up towards the end of this year, but we've got another grant of five point two million that Kendall Manning is managing. There's about four point six million of that is dedicated to lead. There's going to be two hundred and eighty units that are made lead safe over the next forty two months with that. And the way that program is structured is we provide grants of about nine thousand one hundred and forty five dollars per unit for one to eight unit properties. It was also about twenty two hundred and sixty five dollars available for healthy home interventions, things where you might have mold or ventilation or trip hazards or fire hazards, thing of that nature. So there's ballpark about eleven, eleven, almost twelve thousand dollars available to help people address this. There is an owner match required. For one to eight unit properties, the owner needs to come up with fourteen hundred dollars of their own money, but they're getting as they say, about eleven thousand dollars worth of grant money going to that. If it's a larger building with nine units or more, it's one thousand five hundred and fifty unit. Per unit is what you need for a match. And if you've got a building that really needs a lot of work, we can exceed those numbers for grants. It's really on a per case basis. But that's really our target to make sure we get as most, as many units made lead safe as possible. While we've gotten a lot of money flowing into the community since two thousand and nine, we've had seven hundred units that have been made lead safe. That works out to about sixty four units per year. That's, that's important work. It's really helping to keep our children healthier, safer. But with five thousand units in the downtown, it's going to take us seventy eight years to get through our entire housing stock. So obviously, money specifically spent on mitigation is not enough. You really need education. And that's really the work that Healthy Andrews Goggan has, has been our partner in. Really, since we've started getting these lead grants, they've done a great job. You know, with, you know, direct pure to peer work, working with people and helping them to teach other people how to do lead safe practices and educating people about education. They've gotten into the immigrant community. They've done broad public participation. I, you know, educational efforts, I will let Erin and Katie really elaborate on the work they have done, but I want to say that we're making progress. Back in two thousand and four, two thousand and eight, the childhood estimated childhood lead poisoning rate in Lewiston was twelve point two percent of our children. Which is way too high. In the most recent data I've seen, which is twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, that number has dropped six to six point two percent. So all the education efforts as well as the cleanup activity we've been involved in has really helped start to turn the tide. There's a lot of work to continue, but we're right at the beginning of this, this twenty nineteen lead grant, just getting started with that. And I should also note that while our rates are still a bit above the state's average, we also have a higher rate of lead testing than the other community in the state. So really, I think the work of Healthy Andrews Goggan has really helped focus our residents on this as, as a real problem and something that needs to be addressed. And how, how do you live safely with lead if you have not had your property mitigated yet? So with that, I guess I'd like to turn it over to Erin and Katie who can elaborate on all the work they're doing and where they'd like to go.
Thanks so much, Lincoln. And Dennis, can I share my screen?
Should be able to give you that permission if you don't have it. Dale, can you, oh, there we go.
You see it?
Okay.
Okay. So thanks, everybody, for having us here tonight. I am very pleased that the mayor and I have had some really good discussions about lead poisoning and we've really been talking about how can we continue to make lead poisoning an issue that we stay focused on even in the time of COVID? How can we stay focused on it? And also, how can we, we want to continue to see this consistent downward trend in lead poisoning, but then are there opportunities to really bend the curve to really see a significant accelerated decrease in lead poisoning? So that's what we're going to talk to you about tonight. And we're going to provide you some information on the scope of the problem. We're very lucky to have Dr. Andy Smith here to give us the, the best data that's out there. We have some new data to present on the cost that Lewiston incurs as a result of lead poisoning. We want to briefly highlight some of the successes because Lewiston certainly has a ton of successes. And we have to thank the council for many of those. And then we also want to bring to you some new strategies that we've been learning about through our partnership with the National Center for Healthy Housing. And we are one cohort or we're part of a cohort in one community. And there are others out there across the, the nation that we've been learning from throughout the past year or so. And we're lucky to have Amanda ready with us tonight to talk about some of those learnings and some of those opportunities for Lewiston. So let me switch my side here. Oh, great. Okay. So we've got Dr. Andy Smith, who's the state toxicologist for the state of Maine and really the lead poisoning expert for the state. Amanda Ready is the executive director of NCHH. And then you've got Katie and I, and thank you Pam for attending last minute. So quickly, who is Healthy Andrews Goggan? We are your neighbors down on Lisbon Street and our mission is here. We are a public health nonprofit and our goal is really to create a community that's supportive of health and makes health easy for everybody. And health equitable for everybody in our community. And municipal planning and public health really go hand in hand. And we have some examples of that right here. You might recall that last year you all considered the tobacco free Lisbon Street ordinance. And so Healthy Andrews Goggan was able to come with some best practice policy and respond to the needs of the businesses to reduce smoking and litter on Lisbon Street. And then we're able to leverage some free signage and also make sure that folks in the community are connected with cessation resources. So that's one example of many here of things that we've worked on together. And our partnership continues today. The Public Health Committee and Healthy Andrews Goggan through City Funding are working on distributing COVID information right now as well.
Erin, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We're seeing Mayor Care's letter instead of the slides.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
How's that? Good. It must have switched the, the screen that we're sharing. Okay, so I apologize. I'm going to be looking a little bit away from you since it's showing the other screen right now. Okay, so why are we here now? We are here now because our community has pretty clearly stated that a lead free Lewiston is a priority. And this top image is from the Transformation Plan and Growing Our Tree Streets. And this is the first goal is our community is really saying, we're sick of this lead. It's poisoning our kids. What are we going to do about it? At the same time, we've got the highest rate of lead poisoning as Link referred to, and Andy's going to go into a little bit further. And we have some new data here on special education costs that for our community, we are seeing two hundred and forty eight thousand dollars of special ed costs just for the birth cohort born in twenty nineteen. So Pam, if you wanted to say anything too from your experiences, this would be a great time.
Okay, I'm like, this is not slide four, not slide five. So when we look at in the schools, it is important for us to understand that even low levels of lead in the blood can adversely affect IQ and the ability to pay attention and focus. And this really affects a child's academic achievement. Minimal exposure can limit educational attainment and can also change a child's behavior. In the schools, we continue to witness students who have been identified with having led exposure, struggling to focus, struggle to learn in the classroom. It can also impact the emotional regulation of our students. And we know right now with COVID happening, there's so much emotional dysregulation that is going on with those students. There has also been a correlation with students that have been diagnosed with ADHD as having early exposure to lead. And this also increases the impact of a student's that they may become violent later on in life and has actually, studies have shown potential incarceration later on in life. In special ed, we are not specifically identifying students with lead exposure as it's not one of our identifying categories. However, we continue to see the symptomatology of lead exposure. There is, as we are aware, high number of students in lower social economic status that have lead exposure. We have a lot of students in our community in this social, lower social economic status. And really, the big plight of Lewiston really needs to be reducing and identifying lead exposure, which is critical to improving the outcomes of our students.
Thanks, Pam. Another reason we're coming to you right now is Healthy Andrews Goggan has this relationship with the National Center for Healthy Housing, where we can continue to benefit from their coaching and technical assistance. So we wanted to make sure that you all knew that that was a resource available to both the council and the city staff as well. So please keep that in mind as we move forward. And now I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Smith. Andy, if you could just cue me when you're ready to move between your slides.
I can do that. So thank you all for the invitation to address your Lewiston City Council tonight on childhood lead poisoning prevention. What I'm going to try to do in the next, so ten or fifteen minutes is explain the role of the department on lead poisoning prevention. Talk about some of the recent efforts that have been made to greatly expand those efforts. And then end with a look at some of the Lewiston Auburn specific data. And then see what that says about where we are and what all of us still need to do to make progress on eradicating childhood lead poisoning, which is the state goal. So you can go to the next slide, Erin. I think it's always good to remind ourselves why it is that children are so uniquely at risk for lead poisoning. And it's really a combination of age specific behavior and developmental sort of biology. So around six months, you start to have a lot of hand to mouth activity. By nine months, they're crawling. And then they can also around that time start to pull themselves to a stand. And all this gives them lots of access to lead dust and the ability to get that dust into their bodies. And then add to that, that they actually absorb that ingested lead more efficiently than adults do. And even more so if they're iron or calcium deficient. Next slide, Erin. And add to that, that what you've already heard Pam do a really nice job describing, so I don't need to spend much time here, is that they have this actively developing brain, which is sensitive to the toxic effects of lead. And one of the things that have been studied over time is the relationship between blood lead levels and IQ. If you consider a level around a hundred is kind of an average IQ. You can see this sort of decrease in IQ as the blood lead levels increase. And couple of things to note here is that the steepest decline is at the lower blood lead levels. Number one. And number two, there's no apparent threshold. And that's why over the years, in part, you've seen federal CDC keep lowering the blood lead threshold at which they recommend we take action and intervention in public health. Next slide. So now what I'm going to do in a series of slides is sort of walk you through the various parts of Maine's Lead Poison and Control Act as it comes into play for helping to address both control and do some prevention of lead poisoning. And really, it all begins with blood lead testing. And we've had a mandate since nineteen ninety one that all children enrolled in Maine care should be tested at age one and at age two years of age. And here, if you look statewide, you can see, well, we're not making great progress on that. And I'll talk more about both what's being done about that in a moment and also more local data about what that looks like for Lewiston Auburn, that Lincoln has already sort of given you a, a sense of what that's going to look like. So it starts with blood lead testing. Next slide, Erin. And then if blood lead test identifies a lead poisoned child, which in Maine is defined as a child with a confirmed blood that level above five microgram per deciliter. Then we must inspect, must inspect if it's rental property. And these inspections are fairly comprehensive. We're going in there with a special machine that can look for lead paint, even if it's covered with paint that doesn't control lead. And we're doing visuals for evidence of paint in deteriorated or poor condition. There's lead desk, lead, lead dust testing of windowsills and floors. If there's a play area, bare soil, we're testing soils, we're testing soils in the perimeters, and we're testing water with both first draws and flush samples as well. And importantly here, we are testing the unit where the child is identified, but we are also one of the few states that are also testing every other unit in that dwelling. So there's both an element of secondary prevention, which means we're testing the unit where the lead poisoned child is, the canary, if you will. But we're also testing or doing inspections in all the other units in that building, which is a form of primary prevention, taking some sort of intervention before we have a lead poisoned child. Next slide, please. And then if we do an inspection and we find hazards, then by law, we have to post that building. So everyone inside can be aware of it. We have to order relocation of the family if needed. So if the family cannot stay there, specifically the child cannot stay there safely while awaiting abatement, even if we do interim controls, then we have to issue an order relocation. An example of this of what you're actually looking at there are teeth marks on a windowsill. It's going to be very difficult for a very super oral child to live in a building with lead paint when they have that behavior. And then we have to issue an order to abate those lead hazards, which have to be done according to DEP regulations. That's very expensive. This is what, these are the people that end up going to Lincoln Jeffers group to try to get lead abatement funding so that we can meet the twin goals of one, making these properties lead safe for current and future inhabitants and two, keeping them as affordable housing. Next slide. And just back on that one before, and you can stay where you are, Erin, is importantly, is once a lead poisoned child is identified in a rental property, the law is pretty prescriptive. There is not much for flexibility for the landlord. We're going to be headed towards abatement and it's going to be done by DEP regulations and it's going to be expensive. If you want to find lower cost ways to address lead hazards, it is far better that you do them before we have a lead poisoned child. And ideally say at a unit turnover, when there won't be any exposure from doing that work. Get this little thing off my computer that just popped up. So now with that in mind of testing inspections, abatements, let me talk about the way that the law or the way the law has been modified to sort of accelerate progress. So if you increase blood lead testing, you're going to identify more lead poisoned children. You identify more lead poisoned children, we're going to have to do inspections. If we inspect, we're going to find hazards that have to be abated. We're going to make more property lead safe. To that end, the Lead Poison Control Act was amended in twenty nineteen to make Maine a universal blood lead testing state. So we're now like all the other northeast states with the exception of Pennsylvania, that now all one and two year old children, regardless of whether they're enrolled in Maine care, must be tested. And the intent is hopefully will really increase testing rates overall. Completely separate from whether we increase blood lead testing or not, you can increase inspection activity. And again, that was dialed up in twenty fifteen when the Lead Poison Control Act was amended to lower the blood lead threshold at which we will do inspections. We went from fifteen to five. That represented over a seven fold increase in inspection activity without having to do anything around blood lead testing. And we were one of the first states to make this a statewide policy. And there's still, I think, only, you know, a relatively small number of states. Maybe it's decreased over time. Since I last checked, that are actually inspecting at above the level as low as five. And then finally, you can increase abatement activity independent of increasing inspections and independent of blood lead testing. And a way to do that is to lower the standards at which you will call a lead environmental hazard, a hazard that requires abatement. And we just did that this January twenty twenty by adopting EPA's new lead dust standards, which are appreciably lower than the ones we had been using. The old EPA standard for when we will call dust a hazard and require abatement activity. Next slide. So those are all the primary parts of the Lead Poison Control Act that we're doing every day. And most of that is kind of secondary prevention. We recognize that if we're going to really make progress, we have to do more in primary prevention. That's actually part of the Lead Poison Control Act. Because we have this, because really for two reasons. One is I've already told you how we inspect every other unit within a dwelling. When we do that unit with lead, associated with a lead poisoned child, that's primary prevention. But the other part of the law created the Lead Poisoning Prevention Fund. That's that twenty five cent fee on every gallon of paint sold in Maine. And we use that primarily to do two things. One is to fund groups like Healthy Andrews Goggan to do education and outreach at the community level. But the other way is lead dust testing initiatives. And here you see an example again of floor testing and windowsills. We mail out kits to every family in Maine with a one year old. And if they're living in a pre nineteen fifty, we'll offer them that pre nineteen fifty house, offer them that free lead dust test kit. I would like to tell you that that's really successful, but it's not. Where we get really low rates of return on doing this. We are now doing some social media along with it to try to speed it up. We're working with home visiting programs to try to do what we call facilitated lead dust testing. And we're open to other ideas about ways we can help make this primary prevention activity more successful than it currently is. Next slide, Erin. So now let me turn to some of your own local data. And we're going to first look at screening rates. And you're going to be looking at two curves here. One is for one year olds, the dark blue line, and the other is for two year olds, the light blue line. You're looking at how it's increased over time from two thousand and three to twenty eighteen. And what you're looking at for your metric here on the Y axis is the percent of children screened. And under universal testing, the goal would be a hundred percent, right? But you know, the best we've seen around the state thus far is numbers around eighty percent. And you can see a really impressive increase over time in the Lewiston Auburn area for one year olds to attaining eighty percent. We've dropped off a little in the recent years, but still seventy, eighty percent is at the high end of what we're seeing. Not as good for two year olds. There we saw a nice increase. At the same time, we saw the increase in one year olds, but it leveled off at about fifty percent. And it's actually dropped back down into the thirties. So that's clearly an area for working for improvement. And I will say a new venture for us is going to be to do practice level report cards. So we, people can be compared to their peers and we're going to use that to identify the high performers and learn from them and direct our efforts to the ones on the low end to help them improve. Next slide and final slide. These are the numbers that I think you heard Lincoln refer to. So this is one of the ways we measure progress. What you're seeing are for the five highest risk areas we've been funding over time. Actually, there's six there. As compared to rest of Maine, the blue bar show you kind of our base period that we've been using for evaluation purposes, the five year period between two thousand and four and two thousand and eight. And then the orange is the most recent five year period for which we have data, twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen. And as Lincoln pointed out, there has been a substantial drop. And as Lincoln pointed out, there has been a substantial drop in rates for Lewiston. That's the good news, a forty percent drop over that period of time. But it is still the case that Lewiston has the highest rates in the state. It is still the case that they're about twofold or more higher than, say, the rest of Maine. And they haven't yet to see quite the same decrease we've seen in some of our other high risk areas that are now looking like the rest of the state. So there's still important progress to be made, important work to be done. And from the lead poisoning point of view, I'll make the same point that Lincoln made. If you look at the current trends we are on, it will take until twenty seventy four in order to come anywhere near close to eradicating childhood lead poisoning, even with the efforts we've got. So we need to try to find other ways than what we're doing now to try to accelerate that. And that's going to really mean trying to do more in the primary prevention area. So Erin, I don't know whether you want me to take questions now or wait until the end for everyone, but that's your call.
Yeah, that's a lot of information in these. So probably good to pause and see if folks have questions.
Hey, councilors, any questions? Dr. Smith or anyone who's spoken? Councilor Jelinek?
First of all, I just want to say thank you for the, for the presentation. Very well done. Great information. I am trying to better understand this whole lead poison control act. And I, you know, I guess I'm confused. Maybe this is a question for you, doctor. I, I feel like you mentioned that, you know, following the mandate nineteen ninety one, that that's all well, but in two thousand eighteen, we're at fifty four percent statewide and then two thousand nineteen dropped to thirty five percent. And then you also mentioned about the universal blood love, love, lead testing going on as well. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is the drop in that because of access or is it? I'm just trying to understand why, why that would be dropping like that.
I think you want to go, Erin, to the figure for Lewiston Auburn, number fourteen. So I think she's asking about why we see these drops at the tail end there. And you know, that's a good question. That I'm not sure I have an exact answer, but we've seen drops before when there are changes, frankly, in just providers. So a provider leaves the area. That can sometimes be a drop. You know, changes in the way practices, you know, have processes for doing those could be a reason for a drop. I think it would really mostly be speculation for it, for, for why we're seeing this right now. So I don't have a good answer for that. Other than I think our hope is to really see that change. I could show you images of, say, Sanford where it's really impressive. They're over eighty percent for one year olds and sixty, seventy percent for two year olds. And, you know, up in Farmington and Washington County, surprisingly, they have really high rates. But I can also show you communities where the rates, you know, they would be thrilled to have rates as high as yours. So it's, it's really quite variable. And I think one of the things you're going to see and actually kudos to one of your practices, pediatric associates. They went to the legislature in twenty twelve to get the law changed to allow for in office blood lead testing. And that probably has a lot to do with what you've seen for increase. And you're about to see a major expansion of in office testing in Maine because Maine Health is going to roll it out for almost all of their practices.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Jelinek asked what I was gonna ask, but also is Lewis and Auburn's data combined because we like we're collaborating on that? Or is it possible to just get like Lewiston only data?
It is certainly possible to get Lewiston only data. I think it's because when we did the initial analyses, we brought them together and thought we would do the outreach and work together. So, and you know, we sort of funded Healthy Enders Goggin to work in both areas. There's a significant lead poisoning issue in Auburn as well. I think they're number two on the list for towns with the highest rates, if I remember correctly. But there's no reason Lewiston is one of the few, maybe Portland, a few others where the numbers are big enough that it's reasonable to do them separately. So there's no reason why we could not make those available to you.
Okay, yeah, that's just more like curiosity too. I definitely see it as a larger issue than just a municipal one.
Right, right.
But I really appreciate the work you guys are doing. A lot of the Tree Street neighborhood is in my ward, and so it's a pretty big issue down there. And it's just, you know, it's devastating that this is still an issue in twenty twenty and probably will be for decades to come. So I just applaud the work you all are doing. And I know the city, the city staff have, this has been on their minds for quite some years. Long before I've been serving in office, so I really appreciate them for everything that, and the, all the work that's been done. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Khalid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Erin, I have three questions. My first question is, can you talk to me about the outreach effort that has been done, especially in education and prevention in the Lewiston community?
I have a couple of slides on that next. Do you like me to go there now?
Sure. Yeah.
So we did want to highlight some of the efforts that we've made. We've been working on education in Lewiston Auburn since two thousand and nine. We're a subcontractor on the HUD grant that Lincoln spoke about earlier. And we've done resident education, including delivery of lead cleaning bucket to two hundred and ninety units since twenty sixteen. And we're going to continue to do that moving forward into the new HUD grant. We're also doing classroom based, healthy homes education and trying to educate landlords as well. And then finally, we've got what we call our neighbor to neighbor program. And that's the idea where we educate folks in the community who we call ambassadors or they're community leaders. And we provide them with pictorial flip books. You can see in this picture, this woman's holding a flip book. It's a laminated ring bound pictorial educational tool that we use. And each ambassador that we train then goes out and trains ten family, friends or neighbors. So it's a great way to spread the education throughout the community. And it's been really popular with the New Mainor community as well. And then what we've got planned coming up is subcontracting with MCI, which is one of our ethnic community based organizations to do some more lead education in the schools. We're going to be doing fourteen neighbor to neighbor cycles with a target of fourteen hundred residents. And we're also working on mailings and a media campaign. So I'll pop there. Does that answer your question?
It does. I'm wondering for the forty eight ambassadors or the ambassadors, how do you identify these community leaders?
Yeah, good question. It's mostly through our staff member, Hriti Noso. He's a member of the Congolese community and he just uses his personal networks to find folks most of the time. But then sometimes the folks that are the neighbors, the folks that are educated are so interested that then they become an ambassador for the next cycle. So that's primarily how it's done, but we're really interested in looking at a model where we try to look more at like block captains in, in the downtown so that people are geographically spaced and, you know, sort of radiating out from there within the downtown.
You for that. In terms of MCI, sorry, I'm wondering if if we have reached out to Trees Street and they have a lot of young people and a lot of students who do use that location. So I know that you do go to new schools, but I think an extra effort in that area would be helpful, helpful.
That's a great idea. We've never really talked about youth ambassadors, but I love that.
The other question I have is, what is the timeline to get rid of lead in a in a property like a fam, a multifamily unit?
Katie, can you answer that? Or maybe Lincoln?
I'll tell you Travis Mills, who has really been running our most recent lead grant. I know I have seen reports. Dale, I, I think he is watching. He can weigh in. Because from the time they first apply to the time it's actually cleared, there's a lot of legwork that needs to happen. He can give you great specificity because he tracks it. I do not have it handy to me at the moment. Dale, is Travis available?
Yeah, I'm right here.
There we go.
Okay. With the lead program, the application process sometimes can be a little bit lengthy, kind of crossing all the Ts and dotting the Is and verifying that we are eligible to put funding there. From the time that we have a project viable, historically, it's been an average of five to six months to clear the entire building. We have some projects that go really well. And there's either not a lot of work or it's not a large building and they come in much smaller. But we attract some large projects with many units and a lot of work in one location. The timeline roughly, I would say we're probably about six weeks from the time of application until we can tell the owner what the cost is and be prepared to sign a contract. Once we sign a contract, we still don't know the schedule for the lead contractor. So the lead contractor may be able to approach the project in a few weeks. More often they have two or three other contracts. And so they still have a month or two before they can start. And that's the biggest reason that we're seeing a lot of buildings clear about six months out from the time that we contract, from the time they apply. So it's, it's really, there's not a lot of contractors that are set up to do this kind of work because historically the grants have cycled that there's a lot of money, then there's no money. There's a lot of money, then there's no money. And when that happens, it's a large investment for a contractor to get staff trained, to get up to speed, to get in line with all the rules and regulations. And if the work dries up, they will often let their licenses expire and they'll just kind of move into a different line of renovation. So if we're able to continually get funding for the different lead programs around the state, we know that the state has a need and that CDC is identifying properties that need help. And a lot of those properties are properties that the lead program can help with. I think we're building our contractor base slowly. We're hoping to shorten that time, but realistically, the average property, I'd tell them that it's, it's going to be five to six months to, to clear every unit in the building.
Thank you, Travis. Anything else, Councilor Khalid?
Yes, I have another question. Thank you, Travis. So when I was running for office and I've been like knocking doors, I saw a lot of vacant properties and the sign was there. So, and when I asked around why these houses are empty or these properties, a lot of the neighbors said that it's because of lead paint. So, but, but I'm hoping that they're just not abandoned and that somehow, I don't know, like people are reaching out to landlords or maybe I, I feel like we should like go around and see like grassroots organizing kind of effort like on the ground to see what properties are vacant or not in use because that's, that's what I have seen. A lot of properties are banded because of lead. And yeah, and landlords think that there's no funding or that they can't get help. Just a comment, I guess.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could respond.
If you could just be brief, please.
Absolutely. So one of, one of the mandates that Maine CDC has is that when a building is identified with lead paint hazards, the owner is not allowed to re rent a unit if it goes vacant. So unfortunately, we do find a lot of vacant units in the city. And they're respecting the law that CDC has informed them about. So we're, we're catching them up as we can clear them.
Hey, thank you, Travis. Council Khalid, anything else?
No.
Okay.
Wait, are we rushing? I saw it rushed at the end.
Right. Well, we have about ten minutes and you, and we really should stick to, you know, the question period was more for Erin and Dr. Smith versus general. Because the presentation is still, we still have a little bit left of the presentation. And we're about fifteen minutes away from our start of our council meeting. So I apologize if it felt rushed. I was just trying to get things moving and keep it focused. Erin, take it, are you continuing on with?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thanks.
And I'm happy to skip ahead because I think the central question before us is how, given that it's going to take, I think we said seventy eight years to get to all of the housing through the HUD grants, how do we accelerate that? And how do we move from a, a point of trying to be led safe to being completely lead free? And the council's done a great job of approving new healthy housing projects. New construction is not going to have the same lead issues. We've also demolished a lot of our unsafe housing. And I can't say enough about the Choice Grant effort, the Transformation Plan. And I was hoping to give a quick shout out to all these different partners that are working on that, that effort. It's really amazing. And unlike anything else in the state of Maine.
And Erin, I don't want you to rush through things. And so, you know, we want, we want the full presentation. I just I just remind folks that we do have to stay focused on it. So thank you.
I just want to make sure to save time for Amanda, who's joining us from DC. So our central question is here and Healthy Enders Goggin worked with National Center for Healthy Housing to put together the letter that you all have a copy of that we sent to the mayor with kind of a menu of options for what we could do. And so we created a menu that was thoughtful about, okay, we're in the middle of a pandemic. So we want to be realistic. But at the same time, we don't want to just continue doing what we've done and not see a really significant decrease on our lead poisoning rates. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Amanda and let her speak a little more specifically about the idea of the renovation, repair and painting role.
Great. Thank you, Erin. And thank you to mayor and all of the council members for letting me be a part of this conversation and for taking up this important issue, especially right now during the middle of a pandemic when children are spending more time than ever in home, at home and, and potentially unsafe environment. So it's, it's really more critical than ever to make sure that that's a place where they can be safe and, and thrive. So the, the first item on the letter here is about exploring options to encourage property owners to renovate safely through RRP requirements. And for those who don't have the background context, EPA's lead renovation, repair and painting rule, that's RRP. So that's what they, those letters stand for, requires that any firms that are performing those activities, those renovation, repair or painting activities that disturb lead based paint in properties that house children, so homes, childcare facilities, preschools that were built before nineteen seventy eight, we heard earlier, that's about eighty six percent of, I think, of your housing downtown was the number I wrote down. And that those firms have to be certified by EPA. They have to use certified renovators and they have to use lead safe work practices. This approach is different than many of the lead activities that Lewiston is already engaged in, which target homes specifically to address known lead issues. The RRP rule exists to protect residents and workers from lead exposure, even when the project has nothing to do with lead, as is the case with many home improvement or repair projects that may be undertaken either for aesthetic purposes or functional purposes, or to repair other healthy housing needs. We heard earlier about, you know, mold and other issues that might arise. So it isn't a substitute for the type of work that you're already doing or some of the other, other work that you're planning to do that we'll be talking about in just a minute. But it is a really common sense complement to those activities. And fortunately, we have some really great data to back it up and back up the fact that it is common sense. It makes, it makes a lot of sense, not just that it's the right thing to do. Nationally, a couple of years ago in twenty seventeen, a study that was funded by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation found that there was an economic benefit of three dollars and ten cents for every dollar invested in enforcing and encouraging compliance with this RRP rule. And then we've been working with the firm that has did that analysis to look at what that looks like for individual states. So we have information for the state of Maine and then for communities. So Lewiston has been one of a pilot set of ten communities to receive that analysis at the municipal level. And we see a similar pattern there that there's a potential return of three dollars and twenty cents for every dollar invested in really just encouraging people to comply with this existing federal requirement. That analysis also estimated that it could protect up to forty four children in Lewiston alone every year, right? Forty four children is about two and a half kindergarten classes. Forty-four children is about two and a half kindergarten classes, based on the average kindergarten class size in the state of Maine. That's two and a half kindergarten classes full of kids that are going to come to school better prepared to learn and grow and thrive just by really encouraging compliance with this, this rule. And the benefits and responsibilities associated with that rule are, are shared at different levels of government. So I don't want to mislead you and think that $3.20 all comes back to the local level, right? There are benefits that accrue to the federal government, to the state government, to different entities. But there are also your responsibilities that are shared across those entities too. One common misconception about RRP is that because it's a federal program for the state of Maine, some states have chosen to administer their own program, but Maine isn't one of those, that there isn't any action needed at the state or local level. But there is a really critical role that you can play. And that is to adapt your permitting process to help remind people of their obligation here and to ask them to comply with it. This can be as simple as adding a checkbox, asking property owners or contractors to confirm their commitment to following RRP requirements for lead-safe renovations to, we've seen cities that just have people write in their license number or actually share copies of their certificates, which they're required to carry on them at all times anyway. They have to be able to produce them on jobs. So that's not, not really seen as a major hardship. I mean, we do have examples from cities all over the country that, that we can share, right? You don't even have to invent this. Language exists that you could just adopt wholesale here. But I'd like to emphasize a, a few points. First, adding something to your permitting process doesn't add requirements or increase obligations for contractors. They are already required to comply with RRP, right? So adding this checkbox doesn't increase an obligation for them. What it really does is serves to remind contractors of their obligation to level the playing field so that all contractors know that they're expected to play by the same rules and to empower residents to know that this is something that residents should expect and ask for in, in contractors that they're hiring. And so it really just gives residents that chance to ask those questions and make sure that their families are adequately protected. It's also worth noting that RRP protects the workers themselves and their families too, from lead exposure that can happen on the job. And, you know, that gets on their clothes and on their equipment that they can take home. So it benefits not just the residents in the home that's being renovated, but also the workers themselves too. I also want to just emphasize that we have seen, it, it, I said it's just simple as putting a checkbox on a form, but that's not entirely true. We've seen that this is most successful when this approach is paired with appropriate resources. That includes, you know, education and outreach to make sure that people are aware of, you know, this change in the permitting process. And also resources to help support contractors and property owners in doing the right thing. This can include, in many cases, we see it be really effective when cities partner with community groups to offer free and subsidized trainings so that that cost of getting trained that we heard about earlier is, does not become a barrier to compliance or staying trained and maintaining your certificate. Unfortunately, I happen to know, having worked with Healthy Andrews Goggan over the past year, that Lewiston is rich in community partners who I believe are ready and willing to step up and help with, with all of that. As Erin mentioned already, NCHH, my organization is also ready to help with the design and implementation of any of this. And I'll just conclude this section by sharing something that I heard last week. So the city of Rochester is nationally recognized as a pioneer in lead poisoning prevention field. They're just, they're always held up as a role model. And within the last month, Leonard Merritt, who is the manager of code enforcement for the city at a public meeting, stood up and said, and this is a direct quote, I'm going to read here, "One of the smartest things we ever did was put on our permit applications the requirements for the RRP certification. It's one of the smartest things we ever did from a nationally recognized leader here." So I'm really excited to see that Lewiston is considering taking this important step forward to your goal of a lead-free downtown, as well as exploring the other options on the list here.
Thank you.
And Mayor, just a time check. You have a meeting at seven o'clock, correct?
We do. We can go over a little bit. So I, I, I want to allow the council more time to ask questions once the presentation is done, so.
Okay. I'm going to breeze through number two and four for you. They're really just efforts that Healthy Andrews Goggan is doing to do male-based outreach to residents in Lewiston. The idea of an outer corridor, so more like Lincoln Street and around the Bates College area, not in the downtown, but some of the areas that may not be aware of lead poisoning as much as the downtown is aware. But still need that education, as well as working with the city to to really target the areas of downtown that are, that have the most deteriorated housing, because we've got really good maps from the Transformation Plan to go off of. And having a little bit of heft from the city, having the mayor's name on it, I think always makes it go a little bit further and can be an opportunity to really talk about what the city's already done on this issue. So we think that would be some low-hanging fruit that we could easily go after. And so I'm going to hand it back to Amanda to talk a little bit more about one of her passions, which is working with code and planning on rental registration.
That's great. And I promised to try and keep this brief also, although as Erin knows, I could have, I could have taken up our whole workshop with with bullet number three here. So I'm going to start off by just, I'm saying, this is, there's some good news here about lead poisoning prevention. How often do you, do you hear people say that there's good news here? And the good news is we know how to find the problems and we know how to fix them. We even have a lot of information about how much it's going to cost or what it's going to take to do. There's really very little uncertainty here about how we can get this done. The bad news is that, as you heard earlier, we've mostly done this as a nation, that's not just true in Maine, in response to a child being exposed to lead. So then we still have to fix the problem, right? We still have to bear those costs. But now we've created additional problems that also need to be addressed, including, as we heard earlier, the need to provide support and services to that lead-exposed child as they try and navigate their way through school and, and through life. So preventing export exposures before they happen and before they can harm children is what that primary prevention approach that Andy spoke about earlier. And that's really what's going to help you get towards your goal on that ultimate goal of a lead-free Lewiston. That's what that's all about. And one of the really great tools we have available to us at the city level towards, for in terms of primary prevention is working towards a robust proactive rental inspection program. This is different from a traditional complaint-based program and, and approach to code enforcement that only responds when there is a problem. And actually, it only responds when somebody reports that there's a problem. And that's an important distinction because that traditional complaint-based system tends to leave many residents behind and without the help that they, they, they really need. In a proactive rental inspection program, all rental units get inspected on a regular basis, either on a, you know, a three-year, five-year cycle or at unit turnover, as we heard about earlier. So that hazards, like lead hazards, can be proactively identified and corrected before they become a problem or have the potential to harm, harm a child or a resident. And as much as I would love to hear this council affirm their interest in just diving right in and establishing a proactive rental inspection program, I've worked with enough communities across the country to know not to expect that. But what I would like to offer is that sometimes people think that this is a binary decision. Either we're ready for proactive rental inspection or we not, but those are not your only two choices. Also, many folks think about proactive rental inspection system and think about, you know, the codes we have, the building codes, the ordinance that's going to require inspection and the enforcement mechanisms. And those are important pieces, and I, I can say a lot about that. But they aren't enough to make an effective system. My colleagues at Healthy Andrews Goggan know that I, as I said, I could have taken up tonight's entire workshop talking about all of the different components of what make up an effective system, from training and funding resources to supports that actually help property owners do the right thing, right? So they don't have to abandon those buildings and have them vacant, right? There, we know of approaches that can help so that people can comply. And the really great news is that while, while all of those components work together to maximize the impact for residents, they can also have an impact on all on their own. And what that means is you can have a longer-term goal of working towards a proactive rental inspection program that increases equity and maximizes those health protections for residents, but you don't have to do it all at once. You can start building the system piece by piece, and each of those components will have impact and value all on its own, as well as contribute to the overall system once it's in place. And again, here's another example where you don't have to start from scratch. We have models that work and lessons learned from all across the country. And I'm going to hand it back to Erin here, because I know you've already done some thinking and had a committee report back on some recommendations to you about possible next steps in this area. But I'd also like to reiterate that we at the National Center for Healthy Housing here are a resource to you throughout this process. But we can be really a robust resource to you in the next two and a half months that we still have this grant in place with Healthy Andrews Goggan. I mean, that can include connecting you to other code officials who've done this work and worked through a lot of the challenges that you might be facing or be worrying about and thinking about putting a system like this in place. That's people like Leonard Merritt from Rochester, New York that I mentioned, or Bob Curry from Dallas, Texas. These folks have really invaluable and practical advice about how to get this work done from a code's perspective. So we would love to help work with you to figure out your next steps around this particular goal. You've achieved so much already. I mean, I was scribbling down notes of, you know, stories I can bring of success to other countries around or other communities around the country to share. Lewiston is an example, and, you know, listening here tonight and seeing you consider all of these options, I'm feeling more and more confident that 10 years from now, I'm going to be holding up Lewiston as an example, talking to some other city council in another part of the country. So I, I'll hand it back over to Erin, but I want to congratulate all of you on, and really your attention to this issue.
And I would just add that, you know, we already have rental registration in place and there are ways we can continue to build upon that. And as Andy talked about, once a, a child's poisoned, the landlord and the property owner is really locked in to having to do an abatement order at the highest expense and on the shortest timeline. And so if we can create a culture where we're reminding folks about the state law and we're reminding people that the best time to do renovations could be at unit turnover, rather than when a child is poisoned, then that's not only going to help us financially as a community, but it's also going to help drive down the number of kids that are, are poisoned. So I'm leaving you with this slide as a little tickler of some ideas that I created after participating in the Rental Registration Committee and having lots of conversations with property owners in the city and Dave Hattaker. And we'd love to hear your thoughts about what you're interested in, so we can continue the conversation, because we can workshop this workshop.
Thank you. So before, before we kind of talk about next steps, any questions, councilors? So I have a couple. You, you spoke of resources that are available to the council and city staff. Are those resources all also available to the school system? I think that, that could go to Erin or Amanda.
In terms of kind of resources that NCHH can provide, we are happy to work with any entity that is interested in lead poisoning prevention. So if there are folks in your school system who want to reach out to us for support and guidance, we are absolutely happy to, to provide that for them.
Okay, and Erin, does Healthy Andrews Goggan have a working relationship with the schools?
We certainly do a ton in the schools, but we don't know the new superintendent very well, so would welcome that connection.
And then you spoke of testing. Could, could, could that be, are there any communities that are actually testing in the schools?
There are, I can take that, Erin, just from a national perspective. So I, we are aware of communities that either partner with school systems to hold testing events. There are even some communities that require lead testing as part of the entrance for school, the same way that you have to have certain vaccinations or other, you know, health records up to date, so that there aren't, there is a precedent for that to, to help drive an increase in testing rates.
All right. And then my final question is to link. I noticed in your memo that any landlord who may have not paid their water bill or their sewer bill, that takes them right off any possibility of trying to make their building lead safe?
Yeah, we were really trying to target these monies to properties that are sustainable going into the future. We, we could probably revisit that. With the COVID, I know we've provided forbearance for various property owners, just because revenues are down. This was crafted before COVID hit and before revenue started dropping to landlords. But the intent was really to, you know, not just do lead, but let's do all code enforcement issues. And typically, those property owners who stay current on water and stormwater and sewer and taxes, those are the property owners who generally are taking better care of their properties. So that, that was the thinking behind it.
Yeah, so my, you know, my thinking, this goal is to reduce lead pain in children. And I, I, I agree that if a building is on, on its downward trend and will be condemned in the near future, that you're right, we have to protect our resources. But I also would note that I think lots of landlords in our community struggle paying their bills, but they still maintain their buildings, you know, they're just saying, I, yeah, I would like to, I would like staff to at least look at that, because I think we, we could increase the numbers significantly by not counting, cutting out people that might be a little behind on a water bill or a sewer bill or a minor code violation.
Yeah, and I, actually, they're supposed to be current, but another cursor is, or, or beyond a, a approved payment plan that they've set up with the city. So they might be behind, but, you know, rather than just ignoring it, if they said, look, you know, I, I, I owe, I owe $500 and I, I can chip away at it and be making headway, so that it's not, it's not an absolute, but we, we certainly can revisit it.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? All right, so I think we've seen the recommendation in the letter that was sent to my office and then also the, the recommendations in the rental registration. So if we could just maybe get some councilors to weigh in on their thoughts and maybe provide staff guidance in working in the future with Healthy Andrews Goggan. Councilor Johnson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I mean, it's tough to say, like, what, what's exactly tangible in front of us that we're really kind of deciding on? I mean, if it's the recommendations of adding the, the, the part to the application, I'm fully in favor of that. I'm just not sure what else, other than kind of like a conversation. I'm, I'm a bit confused.
So, you know, you know, I think that stuff in the letter to the mayor is pretty simple stuff that I probably could, you know, take charge and move forward. But I think when it comes to the rental registration suggestions, I think really we'd have to ask staff to have a sit-down with Erin and work through that list and, and, and then bring it back to the council during a regular meeting versus a workshop for discussion. You agree, Luke, that that would probably be okay?
Yeah, that, that works.
All right, Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for your presentation. I think everything in the letter sounds, sounds good. It sounds like cost is still being evaluated for RRP. And if that would have an impact, the mayoral letter doesn't seem like it has a big budget impact. I mean, some printing perhaps, connecting with NCHH, knowing they have resources, doesn't seem like a big financial impact. Media slash, I'm sure Dottie will get right on that if we provide her something. And, you know, you just educated and engaged us. So it, it seems like these are really low-barrier ways to, to move us forward on such an important project. And I'm reflecting back to the last time I heard about lead, and it was in a previous term as a counselor. So I'm glad you're bringing it to us. I know there's just so much information to get us all up to speed on and then work forward, work forward from, but it seems like these are low-cost, high-impact efforts. And I would support all of them i- if that is indeed true.
Yeah, and I just remind the council that 74-year number, I mean, that's just not acceptable. I think we, I think everyone in this meeting, we all have to make it a priority to try to reduce that. Because imagine, so if you think about 74 years, and then you look at our special ed director sitting there and just think of the number of students we're sending to her with low IQs right from the start. If, if that's not shocking to everyone in this meeting right now, including all staff and city councilors and obviously myself, I'm not sure what would be. So I'm, I'm encouraged to hear and some of the positive comments from city councilors right now. Councilor Jolinas? You're on mute?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just real quick, I, this is not a shock to me. I mean, outside of, as a city councilor, this is what I live and read every day. And I, and I just think this is such a priority. I would just really concur with what you're saying. We need to make this a priority. There's a lot of things that we can be doing, but out of the gate, like the, the letter from the mayor, and that, that's, that's low-lying food, I think is how you refer to it, Erin. And I think, you know, even looking at maybe doing some work, I know that there's been some work done with the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee, but really trying to lock arms and get some of this stuff done. You know, around education and some of those other things, I think I am all in favor of making this a very, very much a priority.
Thank you. Councilor Creed?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, sure, I mean, I can, I can be supportive of this letter, but I don't think it's enough.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, sure. I mean, I can, I can be supportive of this letter, but I don't think it's enough. Um. Like especially number four, I think media is not enough. And then I think we need to like really use the ambassadors. Because a lot of people don't use social media and Facebook. Um, yeah.
In the rental registry, can you put that slide back up on the rental registration? I think that's. Dennis, have you looked that over? I mean, do you, do you feel staff could sit down with Erin and really kind of look at that and identify ways that we can really have a. Bigger impact than what's been kind of requested tonight?
I, I, that would be my recommendation without commenting on, you know, one through nine. I think it would be best to have staff review this in detail and go over. All of this and then come back to the council, I think, with a, with, with a probably a joint workshop, probably on that specific item. Just update on the rental registration program overall. We do have that under underway. It was paused. Obviously, there's been some delays with COVID and. And some other actions we've taken due to that. But overall, I think that's the right approach. For us to meet with them, go over everything and then come back to the council with, with some further recommendations.
All right. And, you know, I think overall, so the comments we've heard from the council have been kind of clear that this should be something that. That, that we would like as a council to talk, you know, definitely have further discussions and move in a positive direction. So, all right, thank you. Any other counselors with questions, comments? All right, Erin, anything else?
No, just thank you so much for your time and attention, and thank you to Amanda and Dr. Smith for joining us. I really appreciate it.
All right. Yeah, thank you all. And we appreciate you attending this meeting and appreciate the time committed. Thanks.
Happy to do so. Don't hesitate to ask again.
Thank you, sir.
Same here and congratulations on everything you have accomplished so far. And like I said, I look forward to continuing to support your efforts as you move towards your goal of a lead free Lewiston.
All right, thank you, Amanda. All right, Dale, we'll start the switch. All right, I'm just going to go into kind of an introduction, Dale, and then we'll bring in the new folks. All right. So good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 20th Lewiston City Council Meeting. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website address. WWW Lewiston, WWW dot LewistonMaine.gov slash 2020cc. If you join this meeting using any other link, you may have trouble connecting properly and we encourage you to log out. And then rejoin the meeting using the correct website address that I just announced. Public comments on any items appearing on the agenda may be sent to publiccomment@lewistonmaine.gov prior to or during the meeting. And all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. Members of the public who are logged into the meeting online can make a comment when invited to do so by using the raise hand button. In the lower center of your screen. Once they are acknowledged, their microphone would be unmuted and they will be invited to make a brief comment. Speakers will also need to be sure to unmute their mics as well before making comments. And counselors, as always, are asked to raise their hands when making comments. And with that said, the first item on the agenda is the Maine Town, City and County Management Association Distinguished Service Award Presentation. Oh, look who's here, Ed. We weren't expecting you.
Hello, everyone. It's nice to see everyone again. I get a chance, notice I got a chance to put my tie and my sweater vest on, so.
Wow, and you dusted it off. It's very nice being here. We have more people coming in. Dale?
We would, except I don't see them in the attendees list. Dennis, do you, you see them? I don't.
I don't either. So Dennis, maybe you can just kind of explain why Ed's here and.
Certainly, I will. And I'm, and I don't know, I don't know if we, because we ran over, they. Didn't think they were in the right meeting. I'm not sure, but I will go ahead and open this up.
Dennis, before you, Dennis, before you start, I'm sorry, Dale, if you take a look at the list of attendees, Andrew Hart, I believe, is the name you need to elevate. And I do see him on my panel. So sorry, Dennis, to interrupt.
Nope, no, it's better for him to present anyway. So that would be good if he isn't.
I'm missing several others though.
We could start with, with Andy. Can you hear us here?
He's on his way.
There he is.
Yeah, Andrew Hart's here and he's, if you could just unmute and. Welcome, sir.
Presentation on this. And like you said, Mayor, once he's ready.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Lewiston city staff and city manager Dennis Stotl. My name is Andrew Hart. I am the president of the Maine Town, City, County Management Association. And I'm actually present for nine more days, then I'll be past president of the association. And I have the, and during the daytime, just to let you know, to my real job is the county administrator for Knox County in Rockland, Maine, so. And I want to thank you very much for allowing me to participate in the award tonight presentation. It's my privilege and honor to present one of the 2020 Distinguished Service Award this evening. Distinguished Service Award is given each year to one of our managers or retiring managers. Who will soon be retired or recently retired in recognition of the distinguished career in local government management. Recognize a manager whose service to his or her communities has been judged as strong and exceptional. And who has made major contributions beyond direct service to local government. And tonight, we'd like to recognize, or I would like to recognize on behalf of MT CMA and the executive board and our association, Ed Barrett, as a 2020 recipient. So I'd like to give some achievements that Ed has obtained through his years, many years of service as a city manager. From his time in Bangor and then ending in the city of Lewiston. And then a little background on his education as well. So. I'm going to start with Ed achieved his bachelor's, master's in political science from the University of Dayton. He began his career at operational analyst for the budget office in the city of Tucson, Arizona. And then went to be the assistant city manager and director of administration for Wichita Falls in Texas. A city with a $54 million operating budget and over 1,000 employees, which is quite an accomplishment in itself. In 1988, Ed moved to Maine to become the Bangor city manager and he held that position for 21 years until December of 2009. While he was in Bangor, he concluded a 15-year, $40 million combined sewer overflow control program. And succeeded in building a new downtown police headquarters and a new lead gold fire substation. He oversaw a 25-year and continued effort to redevelop the Penobscot Riverfront into public park space. With quality amenities and private development sites and negotiated with Penn National Gaming. To provide the city with a 4% of net slot proceeds and allowed for the development of $130 million gaming facility. At the city's preferred location on Main Street. And with all these accomplishments and much more that he did, it wasn't surprising in 1997 that Ed was recognized by MT CMA with their most prestigious award, which is a. Linkstat Poll Manager of the Year Award. And then in January of 2010, Ed became the city administrator for the city of Lewiston. A position he held until his retirement in June of this year. He continues record of success in Lewiston, spearheading many significant projects, including a revitalization of Lisbon Street. Adopting the Riverfront Island Master Plan and creating both the Legacy Lewiston Comprehensive Plan and the Choice Neighborhood Plan. During his tenure, he also improved the city's financial position and addressed substandard housing. He certainly left the city of Lewiston. Well positioned for the future, something sure that Dennis can continue to, to lead into the future. Over many years, Ed has been a member of the Maine Town and City Management Association, the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee. And the International City Management Association, along with a number of local committees in the Anusgargan Valley. So I would please ask you to join me in congratulating Ed Barrett as this year's recipient for 2020 of Distinguished Service Award and to wish him well in his retirement.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Hart, for taking the time to come here. Yeah, that's true. Ed, I think you know what all of our counselors here think of you. And what a debt, a great debt that we owe you for the work that you did. You came into Lewiston in some of the most difficult fiscal times this city has seen in decades. And then I have to note that you started your career in a period when we were financially struggling and then you ended in a. A period of a pandemic and revenue shortfall, shortfalls that were expected. I personally worked with you for many of those years. I took a break from you for a couple of years, but. You made me a better city counselor. So I just want to acknowledge that, working with you. And Dennis, anything you'd like to say before we let Ed talk a little bit?
Well, you know, as you said, Mark, there's the mayor, there's no question of Ed's leadership and I know I certainly grew under his. Under his leadership in the three years we worked together. When Andy contacted me and, and, and asked if he could. Get on an agenda, you know, to present this to Ed, it was an emphatic yes and certainly work with him. The problem that. I faced was Andy asked me to keep this a secret from Ed. So I actually, I had to put Dottie in charge of talking to him because as I said to. Ed, when he actually questioned me today about this, I said, I wouldn't have been able to lie to him because he knows me too well. And so I wouldn't have been able to keep this a secret. But I think we did a good job, at least keeping this as best we could, but it's so well deserved. And Ed, I just, congratulations. And I don't think I can say it any better than what the mayor's already said, but thank you for everything that you've done for the city of Lewiston and for me.
Thank you. So I suppose you want me to say something now?
Yeah.
Andy, thank you very much. Please pass my appreciation on to the members of the committee, the awards committee, who. Obviously, in my opinion, probably have a horribly hard time, given the number of really quality managers that we have in, in the state of Maine. As was mentioned, I've been in local government for 45 years. I guess that's one of the reasons I probably got the award is I've been in local government for 45 years. But I really consider that to be, you know, an honor on my part to be able to have done that. It's, uh, it's always. Rewarding to work in a community and see your actions have an impact. And I think that's one of the biggest things. So, you know, you don't really need a separate award. It's nice to get. You get that reward every day by coming to work and seeing the community and how trying to help people and make things better. Also want to say that, you know, I don't do this alone. It takes, it takes, it takes everyone. This is not an I operation. This is a we operation. So in 45 years, I don't even know how many elected officials I've worked for. I've probably worked for, I'm guessing easily over 100. And I can say that almost universally, each and every one of those elected officials has really had the best interests of their community at heart. And have tried to leave a positive lasting impact on their community. So all of them share in this reward. And just as important, as I often say, you know, as much as Dennis and I think we're, at times can get trapped into thinking we're important. We're not the ones who do the plowing of snow in winter time. That's our public works employees. We don't mow the grass in the parks. We don't respond to fires or, or medical emergencies or police calls. That's all done by the employees. So everything that, that I've accomplished in my career has been as a part of a group. That includes elected officials who provide leadership and policy guidance and employees who do the work of the organization. Without them, I would not have been able to accomplish anything. So I want to make sure that, that everybody recognizes that this is a shared. Award, not only for me, but for all of you, for your predecessors in the city of Lewiston, for our employees. And all the way back into the, into the, the city of Bangor. So again, I think I want to just thank everyone at the Andy and the committee. It's a special honor to be recognized by your peers. I'll tell you, Maine has some of the best managers in the country. And some of the strongest professional history in terms of professional management. So all of us baby boomers who are now retiring, I hope we're going to be replaced by a bunch of younger people like Andrew and his cohort. Who can make just as strong a record in the community going forward. So with that, thank you again very much. I appreciate it. Also. Brief comment, Nancy's here. The nice thing about being married to Nancy is that she was a manager herself, so that when I said I'd be home at nine o'clock and came in at midnight. She didn't get mad at me. She just expected it and recognized it. So she had the ability to put up with some of the craziness that. That goes along with being a municipal manager. So I want to also thank her for. You know, putting up with me all these years. So with that, I'll let you guys get on and get back to business and it's really nice seeing you all again. I have almost purposely stayed away for a bit, let you guys do your own thing and give Dennis room to operate. So it was nice. I did wander down to city hall today. It was nice to see Dennis and Heather and Dale and some other folks. So. With that, thank you again. Appreciate it very much. Andy, again, pass my thanks on to the committee and to the members.
Thank you, Ed, and very nice seeing you, Nancy, as well. It's been a while. So thank you for being part of this.
Now I'm going to go take my tie and my.
Put your pajamas, put your pajamas back on, right?
No, he didn't shave this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Hart, very much for attending our meeting this evening.
Thank you very much. Very deserving, Ed, and I'll certainly pass it on.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Honorable Mayor and the council members.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, moving on to update and city actions regarding, regarding any updated COVID-19 pandemic situation. Dale?
Pretty much status as, as, as it has been the last couple of meetings. The only really new thing was the governor on October 6th issued her fourth stage of reopening Maine. Dennis and I and the directors have reviewed our policies and city halls and city hall in each department. We pretty much were aligned with those. It really didn't make any substantive changes, just made some new clarifications to staff. So I think if you come into city hall, you'll see anyone who's not in their own workstation by themselves with a face mask and. We just redoubled some of the cleaning and, and the common areas and public has been very compliant. I think we're doing really well. So. Mostly status quo.
All right, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of October 6, 2020. Okay, moved by Counselor Ray.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Ray, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Sorry, Mike, he was a bit ahead of you. And if any, any suggestions on change or. Okay, call the roll, please.
Your counselor from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And word five?
Yeah.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Public comment period. Any members of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston city government. Three minutes per speaker with a maximum time of 15 minutes. And any member of the public interested in making public comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to roll call, which I think when we did the minutes, that kind of. Do you want to just repeat the roll call again?
Sure. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the counselor of word six.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number one, please.
I have number one, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for the Midtown Athletic Club, 875 Lisbon Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to the Midtown Athletic Club, 875 Lisbon Street.
Thank you, I'll.
Second.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Pettingill, and I'll open the public hearing. There's any members of the. There's any members of the public present who would like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll.
Councillor from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And word five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number two, please.
Item number two, public hearing on the renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Pedro O'Hara's one thirty-four Main Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to Pedro O'Hara's one thirty-four Main Street.
So moved, second.
Moved by Councillor LaJoy, seconded by Councillor Jensen, and I'll open the public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that'd like to comment on this? Okay, seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Councillor from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And word five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Agenda item number three, please.
Item number three, public hearing and final passage to amend the land use code and map to rezone properties along Ash Street, Blake Street, Bartlett Street, College Street, Oak Street, and Jack Court from downtown residential to Sonterville. Requested action to approve final passage of the proposed amendment to the land use code and map regarding the rezoning of properties along Ash Street, Blake Street, Bartlett Street, College Street, Oak Street, and Jack Court from downtown residential to Sonterville.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councillor Ray, seconded by Councillor Petten Gill, and I'll open the public hearing for any members of the public. And while we wait, see if anyone wishes to comment. Doug, if you could just give a very brief overview. I believe we've kind of gone over this several times.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're pleased that at the last meeting you were supportive of this zone change. This started out as a single property with the Lewiston Housing Authority wanting to increase some density on a property near the towers on Ash Street. And with staff support, it kind of expanded into a larger area, and we think is going to be helpful to expanding our downtown and also encouraging redevelopment in some of those areas. So we appreciate your support in the past and be glad to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. I just want to go back to the public hearing. Seeing no public comments at this point. I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Councillor from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And word five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. And agenda item number four, please. Thank you, Doug.
Item number four, resolve transferring funding for the selection, development of bid specs, and installation of a parking revenue management gate systems in the five city parking garages. Requested action to approve the resolve rescinding funding from several projects and reappropriating it for the selection, development of bid specs, and the installation of the parking and revenue management systems in the city parking garages.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councillor Jalinas, seconded by Councillor Petten Gill. Questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Dale, you're gonna present.
I'll just do it briefly. On October sixth, we, we had a workshop on this, on this item. Over time, the parking management systems in the garages are about ten years old without significant investment. They're, they're really not reliable and operable and are not, are not, are not allowing our patrons to enter and exit in a, in a normal fashion. They've never been accurate in collecting data, so we can measure occupancy of the garage and usages of the garages. With COVID, our usage is down significantly. This obviously seems like a time for us to invest in new gate systems, but those systems should be consistent or at least compatible with on-street parking in the future. And this effort is really to take advantage of some funding and a couple of projects because of COVID and a couple of other reasons are, are a lesser priority at this time. Let's see if we can get at least three of all those garages up and running. The study is really a small amount of this money. The installation of those facilities is the substantive part.
Yeah, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? I'm just gonna, I'd like to share just one thing, and I know Heather would be upset if I didn't go into this. I, I think whenever the council spends significant money outside of the budget process, that hasn't been vetted through the budget process, we have to use extreme caution in that. And that's going to go for this agenda item and I think the next agenda item. So I, I always try to say, I think I've said it as an elected official, as a city councillor, all the way through my service, that it's just a good reminder for us to really give things a hard look when we're spending outside of a budget cycle without the vetting process. So, but I do believe the next two items, this one and the next one, are hit that threshold of importance and value that it is. So I'm not trying to talk councilors out of it, but all right, any, any other questions or comments? Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just in response to, to your comments, I, I think they're completely valid and ones we should take under advisement, but I just want to be clear for folks who aren't looking right at the agenda. We had allocated funding to other spaces and had some leftovers, and we are just redirecting this funding. This isn't an additional expenditure. Is that correct? See lots of head nods.
I agree, it's correct, but it's money that will no longer go into general fund.
Into reserves.
Right. Yes, into reserves. Thank you for clarifying that. Heather, just to acknowledge Councillor Ray's comments, I'm guessing you would agree with that.
Yes, I would agree with it, and it's, and the monies are being taken from other parking initiatives and redirected into this component. So it's still keeping the same subject matter, if you will, that was vetted during the budget process.
All right, good.
That spirit is helpful to, to recognize in this moment, too.
Yeah, I would agree, and thank you for bringing that up, Councillor Ray and Heather. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, call the roll.
Councillor from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And word five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
All right, thank you. And agenda item number five, please.
Item number five, resolve authorizing a supplemental appropriation to fund the police body camera project in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, of which eighty-two thousand dollars will come from the police grants special revenue funds fund balance. Twenty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars will come from the general funds, eighty-five Park Street Police Renovation Project surplus, and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars will come from the Federal Drug Forfeiture Fund. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing a supplemental appropriation to fund the police body camera project in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, of which eighty-two thousand dollars will come from the police grants special revenue funds fund balance. Twenty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars will come from the general funds, eighty-five Park Street Police Renovation Project surplus, and ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars will come from the Federal Drug Forfeiture Fund.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councillor Clement, seconded by Councillor Jensen, and I'll turn it over to Chief O'Malley for a brief review.
It'd actually be me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
So as Mayor and City Councilors, as you know, last Tuesday on the thirteenth of October, we had Body worn and members of our police department present their recommendation to move forward with Body worn. In a review, and I believe the city council was looking for a recommendation, and I believe that question came is, is when we could expect that. I did not anticipate being able to turn it around quite as quickly, but when we reviewed it with staff and looking at the funding opportunities available, as you'll note, there was some projects and some grants as well as some drug forfeiture funds that we were able to pull together for year one of the contract. We, last night, we did receive approval from the Finance Committee for a waiver of competition, subject to the approval of the city council on this action. So this, what we rigged for you tonight would, would cover the first year of a five-year contract, and then the second year of the contract would be coming up through the budget process in the upcoming budget that you'll see for FY twenty-two. That's it, and obviously, so it's, as you can see in the, the packet, we're recommending approval of this with the breakdown of the one hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars as presented by the city. Yeah, open any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Councillor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really quite excited to be able to address this issue tonight for several reasons. First of all, I think, as you know, we've had this conversation before, that I feel a prime priority reason for the existence of government is protection of the population. And by addressing this issue in the fashion that we're about to, not only does it show support for our police department as they endeavor to provide quality law enforcement services to Maine's second-largest city, but I'm also excited in the technology utilized in the system. Having been involved in this field for many, many years, everything that I've seen about this system, everything I've looked at is light years ahead of anything else that's out there on the market. Several months ago, this council in the divided vote passed a resolution that some indicated there might be a problem with our police department. As a result, our police, through their labor union, asked the council for several things to be addressed. One was the issue of body worn cameras. We directed our city administrator to devise a plan or report back to the council. In my recollection, was by the first of December. Here we are tonight on the cusp of being able to acquire this system that is not only ahead of schedule, but way ahead in technological terms. I just think it's very exciting for us to be able to look at this, knowing that our sister city of Auburn is embarking on a program that would be symbiotic with this, would allow both departments to cooperate further and provide even better law enforcement services to our citizens. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I will vote wholeheartedly in support of it. Thank you.
Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a question that came to me from a couple of constituents after the presentation last week was if there is a indicator light or something that indicates that the devices are recording, and I was wholeheartedly unable to answer that.
There is no light that would come on or turn on. That'd be a huge safety issue for the officers. What I'm doing is I'm working on a policy that the officers will notify people verbally, say, you know, you're being recorded, you know, if you're in someone's home. And there's going to be different situations where I'll come in where they won't record if you're in a medical setting, a doctor's office, those kind of things. But we're working through that policy right now.
That's great reassurance to have. And then just echoing my comments again from last week, I think being able to, to find places for funding similar to what we just did for parking, doing this for this initiative itself shows what a priority it is for this council and, and this community. So I, I'm looking forward to supporting this, and I'm glad there is funding in all these various places for it.
Okay, thank you. And chief, they, they won't have to state their, the folks are being recorded all the time, right? That'll be situational.
Correct. We're, we're working on the policy, and right now it would be more where you have an expectation of privacy. So if someone's in your home, things along that nature is when they'll, they'll tell. But if they're out on the street at a vehicle stop, they won't be saying you're being recorded at that point. It's more where you have the expectation of privacy.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Councillor from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number six, please.
Item number six, appointments to the Lewiston Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Requested action to confirm the mayor's nominations and to appoint the following residents as members of the Board of Commissioners of the Lewiston Housing Authority. Number one, Emily Darby, one fifty-seven Farwell Street, term to expire September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, as a citizen representative. And number two, Anita Stevens, twenty-three Spofford Street, term to expire October seventh, twenty twenty-five, as the tenant representative.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion. Okay, moved by Councillor LaJoy, and I think seconded by Councillor Jensen. So I, I did have the opportunity to meet with both Emily Darby and Anita Stevens. They both currently serve. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, both of them serve, right? Currently, right? That's what I thought. I just couldn't remember for certain with, with one of them, but really good people committed to safe housing, and they really understand their role on that board. So I would recommend that the council support this nomination. Okay, questions or comments? All right, seeing none, call the roll.
Councillor from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And word five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item number seven?
Reports and updates.
Councillor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, for school committee, there was no meeting on Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was observed two Mondays ago, and then there was a COVID-19 update meeting last night. I was unfortunately unable to attend, but based on the email communication from the superintendent and chief academic officer, it seems that things are are under control within the school system, and they are working through each case as it comes to them in a highly effective and responsible way. On the other side of committees, the Anderson County Budget Committee meeting tomorrow night is its public hearing on the county budget. It goes to commissioners on November fourth, and so it will be presented in totality tomorrow night, and then we will work to present that to the county commission on November fourth.
Thank you. Any other reports or updates? Councillor Jalinas?
I just wanted to report to the council that the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee has been working hard to put together flyers regarding just stop, you know, try to help to eliminate the spread of germs and also mask up decal. So those are being disseminated in the community by a few of us, and be looking for those. A lot of work went into that, and we're pretty excited about that.
All right, thank you. Yeah, you've had a busy committee this year.
Yes.
Councillor Jensen?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let the council know that I've given up my seat on the airport Board of Directors, and I'm asking if one of you would be willing to step up and take my place. I just have started a new career and I need to focus more on that. And so if any of you are interested, please speak to Mayor Care, Mr. DoT or our city clerk, and get started. And I can answer any questions you have, too. Heather serves on the committee with us and is a great resource as well, so.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, Luke, because it's kind of been on my back burner. And I'm, so I'll ask councilors right now, is there any interest on short notice? There might be some interest, so somebody might jump at it, but how many, how often do you meet with the airport board?
One meeting a month.
One meeting a month, folks.
At the airport, so it's pretty cool, too.
Yeah, at the airport. And it's actually, I served on the airport board, uh, for a few years. It's really, it's, it's fun and has, we're working through economic development. I think the airport is, uh, an important role in that. All right, so I'll, uh, be calling each of you and begging over the next couple of days, so. Okay, uh, any other, uh, reports or updates? Okay, gender, uh, gender item number eight.
Item number eight, any other city business counselors or others may have relating to Lewiston City Government?
Counselor Khalid?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to follow up with the rest of the council. Um, we had a, um, represent, um, presentation by the housing committee last week, and I'm wondering if we can give them a feedback on that recommendation in their presentation.
So, Dennis, could you just kind of share what's kind of ongoing right now with discussions? And is there anything you want to add to, to that before I turn it over to council?
Well, I, I can simply say that we've had, we've, staff have taken some initial steps in, in reviewing some of the recommendations, at least from a, you know, a staff standpoint. Um, obviously not going too, too far without, uh, you know, direction from the council. On top of that, I can tell you that there is some conversations, uh, that I've been invited to with the states, um, and some other major, some of the larger cities. That's actually happening later this, this week. Um, and the subject is homelessness and, and how to address that from a statewide, I believe, standpoint, as well as looking for some feedback, um, from our unique challenges, uh, so to speak, from Lewiston. So I'll be sharing, um, a lot of those recommendations and carrying those forward that we received from our housing committee and sharing the work that, that's going there. So, um, and then reporting back to, to you all once I, um, some of these conversations, uh, get developed a little bit further.
Okay, any, uh, councils have any questions or comments around, around that? I think we just had a presentation. I think there's a lot of discussion on the regionalization of homelessness. And I, I do think it'd be premature to try to come up with, uh, quick ideas in reference to their recommendations until we have a broad understanding of what's happening at the regional level. Are you okay with that, Counselor Khalid?
Yeah, um, I don't know how the rest of the housing committee feels, but I am just envisioning a more formalized, um, feedback rather than now just throwing out ideas.
Putting us on notice. Uh, and I do know, like, uh, like the health committee is having discussions around public bathrooms as well. So I think there's a little, is that correct? Stefan, Counselor Jelineh?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
So, you know, I think there's a few things happening right now, and, you know, actually for months, there's been some general discussions. I think we're just trying to pull some things together so we can respond to the, uh, housing committee. All right, and if nothing else in reference to that subject, Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would just be remiss if I didn't, um, again, thank and congratulate the city clerk for all the work that's going on with early voting at city hall. There has been immense feedback shared with me at the very least about efforts to get folks registered, move through there. I went through myself. What a great process. Um, just huge continued kudos because I know the work is not done yet.
So, thank you, Counselor Ray. Um, I appreciate that. I'll just give a quick update to the council. Um, today we issued our ten-thousandth absentee ballot, which is definitely a record. Four years ago at the last presidential, our record was six thousand for the city. So to issue ten thousand, um, is definitely a record. We have still about a week and a half to go. So we're really pleased with the response from the city in voting early to, uh, keep voting at the polls as safe as possible. So we're really excited about that. Uh, we do have Saturday hours this Saturday from nine to noon. So please, uh, feel free to spread the word. This Saturday, nine to noon is Saturday hours. Uh, we also have evening hours this Thursday as well as next Tuesday. So in-person absentee voting ends next Friday, the thirtieth, at five P M., and that's by state deadline is when it ends. So it's not just the city kind of shutting it down, but statewide, five P M. on Friday, the thirtieth. And as Counselor Ray noted, uh, we're seeing a lot of activity in early voting downstairs. We are averaging two hundred customers a day, two hundred voters a day downstairs. Uh, but it seems to be very efficient, I think, because it's a quick, fast ballot. There's one ballot for state candidates, and that's it. So most voters are telling us that they are in and out in ten minutes. So they're really loving the speed and the convenience of it. So thank you, Counselor Ray. We'll pass that on. We appreciate that.
Madam, uh, clerk, so what, how about the returns? What, what are the numbers showing for returning absent?
Last I checked, which I think was yesterday or the day before, we were at about seventy-two percent return rate, which is really great, uh, Mr. Mayor. So lots of interest in our outside ballot box, which is really great. We are emptying that at least twice a day, seven days a week. So the ballots don't sit in there for very long. We're pulling those out, uh, as rapidly as we can.
Uh, and just to add to Counselor Ray's comments, when I was leaving yesterday, uh, somebody made it a point to pull over and run up to me and just say how easy it was to vote. So, yeah, thank you, Counselor Ray, for bringing that up, and thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd just like to take an opportunity to pass along some kudos to the Public Works Department. I know that my colleagues from time to time get constituent concerns. I've had a couple, not the grandest of things, but, uh, to the constituent, they were major items. And through the efforts of, uh, now deputy administrator and our new public works director, I'm happy to report that both of these items have been taken care of in what I call spectacular fashion, uh, much to the enjoyment of the two constituents involved. And I think it turned around some of their perceptions of city service and, uh, you know, I'm just happy that we were, be able to provide that service. And I think we should congratulate our public works department for what they do unsung all the time. A lot of people don't think about them, but as our former administrator said tonight, they're the ones that plow the snow and mow the lawns and, and take care of all this stuff that nobody thinks of. And in this instance, I think they did an excellent job, and they've really satisfied a couple of my constituents, and I'm very happy that they were able to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from the council?
Move to a join.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Ray. Call the roll.
Counselor from word six.
Yes.
Word seven.
Yes.
Word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
And word five.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, everybody, and have a nice evening.